Watch the replay.
Watch the replay.
I'd like to welcome everyone to council meeting tonight. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilor Quan's give us our invocation tonight, please.
Thank you, Father, that we can gather here this evening to go about the business of the city. We thank you that we live in a society where we can share opinions, where we can discuss things together, where people can have a voice in their government. Help us to always use our voices respectfully and for the common good. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Alright, thank you. I'd like to welcome Scout Troop 730 here tonight from United Methodist Church. Hi, guys. Welcome. Alright, let's move into the approval of the minutes from March 29th meeting.
I recommend that we approve the minutes as submitted.
I second it.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, thank you. Alright, so tonight, we have two guests with us from the Cosiasko County Prosecutor's Office. Deputy Prosecutor Katie Hampton and Victims Assistance Coordinator Linda Justy, also from the Prosecutor's Office. Tonight, they are here acting as local advocates against crimes of sex and child abuse. They have a program that they would like to present to the community. They have an introductory luncheon scheduled, but would like to come and talk just a little bit to the council about their program. They've asked me to do a proclamation, which I have included in your packet tonight, but I think I'd ask the experts to address you and talk to you a little bit about this program. Katie, Linda?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First off, I would just like to thank you for this opportunity to address the council and, Your Honor, the mayor regarding the Start by Believing campaign. In 2011, the End Violence Against Women International Organization implemented or started what's referred to as the Start by Believing campaign, which tries to provide public awareness of providing a compassionate response to victims of both physical and sexual violence. Many communities throughout the United States and internationally have joined in this campaign. And on April 25th of this year, in the city of Warsaw, organizations from throughout Cosiasko County are going to be educated and informed on this awareness campaign that's being launched as a cooperative between the Cosiasko County Prosecutor's Office and the Beeman Home. We have provided some written materials regarding the program. This is such a timely issue. We've seen so many disclosures of sexual assault, whether it be out with the Weinstein situation or the Nassar situation. And based on our experience even locally in this community, I think Linda, who is our Victim Assistance Coordinator, and I can both attest that disclosures by victims of sexual violence or domestic violence are not in the frequency that they may occur. What I mean by that is that we have a lot of incidents that go unreported because of fear of repercussion or backlash or victim shaming, but yet from family members or friends or other members of the community. We've had really sad situations with cases that have been prosecuted through the Cosiasko County Prosecutor's Office where victims did report and were then bullied. An example of a child bullied at school because they were not believed by the other children in the class. And then ultimately, that perpetrator was convicted of abusing that child. But the result of not providing compassionate response to that child is the revictimization of that child. And so, the purpose of this campaign really is to provide educational materials to community leaders, churches, first responders, government officials, so that they can then pass that information on to their employees and even to make the public aware of how they can respond to someone who may disclose a sexual assault incident to them. Because many times, our victims do report to a friend or a school counselor or a trusted adult. And so, giving those individuals the tools that they need to provide an appropriate compassionate response can help to prevent the revictimization of that individual who is seeking the assistance of someone in a traumatic situation. So, we would encourage and invite each of you to attend the luncheon on April 25th if you're able to. We're happy to provide additional materials for anyone. And those here in the audience who are interested in the campaign, we can include them on our campaign email distribution list and as well provide them with educational materials. The purpose of us appearing today not only is to present this campaign to the council and to the mayor, but also to request that the city of Warsaw declare the first Wednesday in April as Start by Believing Day. This request coincides with other special events that occur in April. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and we just recently saw an observance of the child abuse prevention on the courthouse lawn. And so, again, these three campaigns really do go hand in hand because our victims, across every age group, every socioeconomic strata, there is not a typical sexual assault victim or a typical domestic violence victim. And all of those victims need the support of community members and first responders, educators, to help them to proceed through the criminal justice system. But not only that, to help them have the tools to overcome a traumatic event in their life and not let that event define them moving forward, so that they can begin the recovery both physically and emotionally. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I really, again, appreciate this opportunity to have addressed you this evening.
Any questions? I think the invitation was presented to all of you and there's a little bit of information. I would certainly like to applaud Katie and Linda for bringing this program into the community. We sat down today and spent some time and I thought it was certainly a program that was something that would do very good in this community and understanding the difficulties and the stigma attached to these problems. Anything that we can do to lessen the burden on someone coming forward certainly makes sense, so I certainly appreciate them coming forward. With that, I'd like to come around front and read the proclamation and then present them with the proclamation. But again, before I get started, any further questions on the program?
I think it is noteworthy to add that Warsaw, in many respects, has been very proactive in providing for victim services and victims' rights. The Warsaw Police Department, for many years, had a designated advocate that would go to the hospital or to assist officers on a multi-jurisdictional basis. And so, by implementing this program here in Warsaw today, we will be becoming one of the first communities in the state of Indiana to have adopted a Start by Believing Day. And I just think it's consistent with the philosophy that this community has had to provide support for their victims, so thank you.
Alright, so, the City of Warsaw, State of Indiana proclamation, annual Start by Believing Day. Whereas End Violence Against Women International is a nonprofit organization dedicated to improving the criminal justice system's response to sexual assault. And whereas the city of Warsaw, Cosiasko County, State of Indiana, shares a critical concern for victims of sexual violence and a desire to support their needs for justice and healing. And whereas many sexual assault survivors do not report the crime to law enforcement due to the responses they receive when they first tell someone about their assault, current estimates suggest as few as one in five sexual assaults will be reported to law enforcement. This is one factor that inspired EVAWI to create the Start by Believing campaign in 2001. And whereas research documents that victims are far more likely to disclose their sexual assault to a friend or family member, and when these loved ones who respond with doubt, shame, or blame, victims suffer additional negative effects on their physical and psychological well-being. And whereas the Start by Believing Public Awareness Campaign is designed to improve the responses of friends, family members, community members, and professional service providers, so they can help victims to access supportive resources and engage the criminal justice system. Now, therefore, the Warsaw City Government and the state of Indiana, by the mayor of the city of Warsaw, does hereby urge all citizens to educate themselves on the appropriate ways to respond to sexual assault disclosures and to recognize the first Wednesday of April each year to be Start by Believing Day throughout the city of Warsaw, state of Indiana. Thank you.
Alright. Lynn, item number two, fund report, March fund report, has been presented to you. Any questions? Alright, well, let's move into unfinished business. At our last meeting, ordinance 20180401, mending rates and charges with respect to sewage works to include a summer's credit, was introduced. And the public hearing was advertised for this evening, so tonight, we will consider ordinance 20180401. I think you've all had a chance to look through that. Randy Rumpala is here, representing the city, and would be happy to introduce this as well as answer any questions.
Good evening. So, as I mentioned last time, what this ordinance does is to take into account the increased usage of water, and I think we had talked about this during the rate process last fall and winter. And so, the intent of this ordinance is to allow for a credit to be provided for anyone who asks for it for residential property, dwelling units, during the months of, from mid-May to mid-September. And that, for that period of time, the consumption would be based on a base period that for 2018 will be for November, December, and January. And then in future years, it'll be October, November, December. And I think I mentioned last time, we had to shift that slightly for 2018 because we didn't have the data from Indiana American Water. But going forward, we would use October, November, December to take into account folks that may be leaving the dead of winter, the January timeframe. And as the ordinance sets out, if the base period usage happens to be higher than the actual consumption period for any months during the consumption period, the consumption period bill would be reflected in the billing. So, you wouldn't pay more. You would just pay what you use. The ordinance is set up, as we talked last time as well, to provide for a property owner to request that one time in writing. We've left some ambiguity in terms of the request in writing, thinking that the billing department can organize itself in terms of how it wants that communication expressed back to the billing department. But once they do request it, then it would continue until the property ownership changes and that new owner then would have to come in and request that as well. Or if for some reason, the property owner didn't want to have it, they could unsubscribe, if you will. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And I did provide to Lynn the notice of public hearing earlier today, so the notice was published and for the hearing today.
Alright, questions? I think, as I mentioned last time, you know, the only real questions we had was when would the period be? How long would it last? And then, do we have rate owners sign up once a year? And I think taking Randy's cue from best practices in a lot of communities, that, you know, once you sign up, it's year on until the property changes. So, none of that is set in stone, and if you all have a different thought or a different idea about that, we can have that discussion. And I think we should talk a little bit about that before I open it up for public hearing. But if you have no further questions of Randy, then we'll entertain your comments and then we'll open this up for public hearing, if you want. Alright, thank you, Randy.
Alright, thank you. Well, my thought as far as requesting is, why would we want to make each resident requested yearly? I would be in favor of just, you know, ask for it once and it's good until the house or residence changes ownership. That's my thought.
Which is how it reads now.
Yeah, and the only other point being of making sure that we've got something in place for people to take advantage of it this year. I don't know how long it will take for us to get something active. I wouldn't want them to have to send a registered letter or something like that, but, which I don't think that's even been considered. I know we'll make it easy on them, but I would like to have assurances that that would be in place for this summer.
Randy, didn't you say that legally, in writing, could be as simple as checking a box on the bill saying?
Right, that's why I didn't, we didn't, as the ordinance is drafted, we didn't want to specify exactly how in writing. So, it's not necessarily a certified letter. And if the billing department determined that's the most appropriate way, then I would sort of leave it to them. But the intent is that it can be, you know, and for this year, from the timing of it, it may not be in a billing because we're already at, you know, we're at mid-April. And so, I don't know whether it would be possible to get, we may, you know, there may need to be information provided by the media and have people actually contact the billing department if they want it to apply this year. But the intent would be the billing department going forward then could figure out the best practice for how it would work here in the city.
We were talking about having forms available online and for people to come in and fill out that they would just keep on file, too.
Right.
In talking with Rebecca, you know, the online payment, the in-person payment, as well as mail, there would all be a system of the checkmark, or it would be pretty easy to implement. And she felt with our software, it would be, it would not be that difficult. The whole idea was to get this done, as we promised, before the summer starts. And I think tonight, with your approval, we'll get moving on it right away. And I fully anticipate that it'll be available this summer. Again, it'll just be a matter of getting the information out to the public and then whatever means you use to have them apply for it will be a one-shot deal.
My other question was, when we talk about residential units, if someone is renting a home, is that considered a residential unit or a commercial unit?
It doesn't say dwelling.
It says dwelling unit. That's why I said residential. I tried to correct myself with those dwelling unit. So, it would be the responsibility, whoever's paying the bills, as the ordinance is currently drafted. So, if the landlord is paying the bill for that dwelling unit, it would be the responsibility of the landlord to request that, you know, the credit.
And if the bill's in the renter's name, that would be the responsibility of the renter?
Exactly.
Whoever we see.
Whoever's paying the bill. Right, right.
Yeah, the bills are all in the property owner's name.
I do have a question, and I'll direct it to you, Randy. It may be trivial, but based on best practices, I don't have American, Indiana American Water, so I don't know what their billing period is. But this says here in section B that for the period of mid-May through mid-September. Do, just based on their billing for the water usage, do you know what I'm getting at? Who decides what's mid-May or mid-September? Is it May 15th, September 15th? Or is it the 10th or the 18th? Or is it the third weekend or?
Yeah, I think.
Is that a little too ambiguous or am I being nitpicky?
No, 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 and I don't know for certain. I know when Jeff Rau from Mumba and I had the conversation with Rebecca, that was kind of how she wanted it framed because it did correspond to what the billing periods were.
Isn't it for our June, July, August, October billing?
It's, and the way she described it is if you do mid-May to...
Mid-May to mid-September, four months.
Yeah, I understand, but are billing in May?
Right, but it would then be reflected on the July, so, I'm sorry, mid-May through mid-September would pick up mid-May to mid-June, and then that would be reflected on the July sewage works bill. And that's why the billing is referenced July through October.
I had the same question for her. She can set the billing cycle from the first, anywhere along there.
And you were okay with the language there?
She said, well, the important thing is that our software can handle this, and that's the critical part. And I asked her about that.
That's...
How would we set up mid-May to mid-September and the billing period would just be? She can set that billing period from the middle of May.
Right, and that's, and the language came, because I was wanting to write it the way she wanted it to be, you know, to be reflected so that billing can handle it. And that's how we ended up with, she said, the way the utility bills come out now, that like that first month, that mid-May to mid-June, would be reflected on the July bill. And that's why in the ordinance, it refers to the billing months as well. So, it's the July through October bills, which would pick up mid-May to mid-September.
Right, I understand that. It's a month behind.
Right, right.
Alright, anybody else? Alright, I will open the public discussion up with regards to this rate change, this ordinance that allows for summer credits. If anyone wishes to speak either on behalf of or in opposition, just ask them to approach podiums, state their name, and maybe list their concerns.
Dwayne Huffer. And I don't understand this aspect of the billing, because I'll start using water for my yard and my swimming pool the very first part of May. So, I don't understand why it's not May through September, when there would be outside water usage. Because I'm sure the intent is not to pick on people that are using Indiana American Water versus the multitude of people in our city that uses well water. That's the question. Why not May through September?
I think, I mean, if you're on... If you're using well water, there's no way for the city to know how much water is being used. I mean, it's not, how do I say this? So, you have, I can't recall now. We came up with the mid-May to mid-September. I think it was more of a four-month period and it corresponded to how the billing was handled. But the folks that are on wells, there's no data. We don't, the well water usage isn't metered. And so, whatever water they're using for pools or whatever, wouldn't be reflected on their bill because they're paying a fixed rate based on the fact that they're on wells, as opposed to being on...
I think the judge's question was, why couldn't we start May first?
I think we were looking at a four-month period, and I think we were looking at how to correspond to the billing. That's my only memory of it. So, I think it was more based on the timing of the bills versus May to September.
I think it's when our sewage bills go out.
Right.
When we looked at other communities, a lot of communities only did three months.
Three months, right.
And we decided to do four, and we thought mid-May to mid-September would reflect the hottest part of the summer.
Right.
Suppose that was the reason.
A lot of communities only do June, July, and August. And that's, you know, it's being somewhat, you know, arbitrary, but it's just how a lot of communities do do it. And I think in the early discussions with the mayor, that by doing, and it corresponded to the billing as well from the sewage utility bills, doing from mid-May to mid-September provides a little bit more, greater flexibility for the credit, if you will, as opposed to just doing June, July, and August. Because that's what, I know Jeff and I, Jeff Rau from Mumba, when we came into it, just looking at how we've done it in other communities, it was more three months. That was kind of, that's been more the standard than not. And so, I think the flexibility was to increase it to four months, and then it became a question of timing, which four-month period. And I think that was where we talked to the billing folks, to Rebecca, and that was mid-May and mid-September made the most sense based on billing.
Well, the discussion I had with a few council members was, do we go three or four? And we felt like, I mean, there's no problem going four. So, we decided to go four, and we tried, again, to fit the billing. That was the reason for going four.
I know. I had looked at about a dozen different communities, and three to four was the average. I didn't see anybody that went more than four.
Right, right.
Dwayne Huffer. I do not mind paying my fair share of the sewage bill because I use Indiana American Water. But it's not fair that if I start watering my yard and filling my swimming pool in May, that I'm paying for it. In regard to what other communities do for three months, what difference does it make? It's the aspect of usage. Why should I be charged more for sewage use when the water's going into my yard, going into my pool? So, I think we really need to look at the watering season. Now, what is convenient for billing, what does not, other communities do? But what do we, how do we want to treat our citizens? Do we want them to pay for sewage that they're not using because it's going into the ground, going into a swimming pool? I don't think so. I don't want it that way. That's my pocketbook.
Dwayne?
Yeah?
Do you know exactly when your water bill is being read?
No, I just received a water bill today.
Yeah.
But so, regardless, when it's read, we need to figure out so we're not charged, we're not paying for our watering that's not going into the sewer.
Well, I understand that, but a lot of times, the meters not being read till the end of the month, like, would be the end of...
So, if it's read at the end of May, and I started watering in May...
Well, but it would be, previously, it'd be read in the middle, or last of April. So, I'd think that May would be one of the months that they would be averaging that off on, right? What they, yeah, it's January, February, March.
Are you suggesting that there be no period, that it just, that there can constantly be a watering credit offered? If we've got a warm...
Again, if my water is not, if my water is not going into your sewer, to our study's sewer, why should I be charged for that?
Well, I understand that, but we're trying to put together a policy that addresses that issue.
And then, the policy should be that water usage from May through September should not be considered.
So, you're asking for five months instead of four?
Right.
Okay, that's fair?
Mm-hmm, and it's fair that I am not charged for water not going in the sewer.
Okay.
Mayor, I will tell you that I'm looking at the calendar, and I have a swimming pool also. And mid-May, getting ready for Memorial Day, is when you drop thousands of gallons in a swimming pool. I can't speak for every pool owner, but the window I would be looking at would be the week of May 14 through 18 to put thousands in, depending on the year and the season, how much you have to put in. But that would be, what if I did that a few days early or a few days late? It could, it's a few dollars, and I mean, we could all wait if there was a, if there was a date that he and I knew, we would wait until the next day to do it. But it's, it usually takes a couple weeks to get somebody's pool area up and running. So, I see the concern there.
Sure.
With pool owners, and that would be a huge, along with the watering yards, which, the way it's going, there's snow out. But you get the, the idea would be that you start watering in late May, June, but the pools...
It's going to be by September.
So, I do see his concern there, but this is really a very, very progressive and good thing for us to be considering already. I am surprised and thankful that the committee and mayor, and we're working on this. This is good form.
Well, for the ease of our constituents, would it be better to take some of the ambiguity out of it and say May 15th? I mean, that's May first.
That's May first. I think what the judge is saying, he's not asking for two weeks. Move it that way two weeks. That's really what he's asking.
But he's asking for five months instead of four, which I'm fine with.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that. We started with four months because that seemed to be the top end of best practice. You're not going to get the credit if you don't go over, so it doesn't really matter.
Right.
So, if you want to go five months, if you guys are fine with that, I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
But that's the discussion, because right now, it reads it's four months. And if you want to go five months, I assume we can take care of that tonight.
Well, the software can handle it. We, you know, we-
The software can handle it.
Right. But would the, two weeks back make it five months?
Two weeks back?
Well, if you go from the beginning of, of, of May through the middle of September, that's four and a half. And, and I'm not sure what I'm hearing. The judge said he wanted five months.
Can we hear from anybody else?
A broader period. That's, yeah. So-
Can I put some in?
Yes, please.
Please.
It has really to do with the billing. If you move it to May one, essentially how we get our readings from Indiana American water, excuse me, you're actually moving it to April fifteenth because of how we get our readings. That May one reading's gonna come in, in the April fifteenth to May fifteenth reading. The next reading's May fifteenth to, so if you move it to April, to May one, you're really moving it five months. You're gonna make it April fifteenth because of how our readings come in. And we don't get a reading each week. So we couldn't bill one amount for the first two weeks and one amount for the second two weeks from what we get from Indiana American water. Does that, does that make sense?
So you're saying that by us making it mid-May, we're actually giving them the credit from May one?
No, we'll get, we'll get mid-May to mid-June. We get that reading and then we bill that for July.
Yeah, but I'm talking about how it's actually done based on the readings.
That's how it's act, we get a reading, we get a reading on June fifteenth, say, from May fifteenth to June fifteenth. That's that, so if you move it to May first, it's really gonna be April fifteenth to May fifteenth is where that reading is from.
But that's where you want it?
Right, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify the billing. You're talking about moving it to May first. But you can't really do that. You're kinda stuck to the mid-month as, but you can move it a whole month and that would incorporate that May first deadline.
So you're suggesting it should read mid-April?
I, I'm not necessarily suggesting either way, but if you want to, if you want to include May first, really just make it read the middle of April.
Yeah. Like the mayor said, if they, you know, if they don't use-
If you wanna do five, five months, just move it a month forward.
We're just creating a mechanism for someone that uses an excess amount of water at a certain period of time. And if they don't use an excess amount of water, we're not, this doesn't apply.
So we can go from mid-April to-
Sure. Right.
In September and-
Like I said, when we had our initial discussion, we felt four months was a, was a reasonable period. It was best practice in other communities and, and I thought it was a reasonable suggestion. There's nothing saying we couldn't go five months at all.
And I, I appreciate what you're saying, that we're not putting something in stone. We can see how it goes.
Anyone else have a concern or comment with regards to the?
I'll get it all the way back. Dave Taylor, the only thing I can tell you is the pool companies are already starting to open pools. So at, at this point, so that means they're gonna start filling pools at this time. Now, it's, it's gonna be like the polar bear club out there, but they have started opening pools. So that's just, just my common net, comment for information for the city council.
Thank you.
And personally, like I have a Hoypon. They're getting, I'm getting cleaned out this next week, so it's before the May thing. But I was also under the impression that if you had over-usage of water between the time of when this ordinance is and any other time, that you could, it's a case-by-case basis if you plead to the collection office.
Anybody else with regards to public comment on this ordinance? All right, I'll close the public hearing and throw it back to council.
I think based on what the judge has said and thinking pool ownership and now Hoypon, I, I wasn't originally, but I'm, I'm now thinking, this is a good faith effort. Let's try five months. We'll back it up early and see how it goes. And, and I just appreciate everybody's efforts and also the comments tonight to help us come up with an even more sound policy or good faith effort here. Yeah, I, I agree, Jeff. This isn't written in stone. If it doesn't work, we can readdress it.
With regards to any other details, are you guys good with the rest of that as far as setting the base period the way it's been determined? And you're all okay with, with having current homeowner request and then be used applicable until the property changes things? You're all good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So Randy, do you have any comments on how we would amend this?
No, I think, I think all you would do, and I appreciate the clarification on the billing, cause that's what I was trying to say and he said it more clearly, is that it, the water bills that are received by the sewage department are that mid-month to mid-month. So I think all you would need to do to get to five months is make it mid, in section B of section seventy-eight, one fifty-five on the bottom of the first page, second line, so it would read specifically the period of mid-April through mid-September. And that would get you to the five months.
So we'll just change the mid-May to mid, mid-April?
Right, right.
So do we have to do a motion to amend this since it was approved on the first reading?
Yes, yes.
There's no action taken on the first?
Yeah.
It's all right.
So moved.
Second. Ron got it.
Further discussion? All right, all in favor of amending this ordinance to reflect mid-April through mid-September, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right.
Now, do we need to vote on the whole thing?
Yes. I move we accept the ordinance as amended. A second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of ordinance twenty eighteen oh four oh one is amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Thank you. All right, we will move into new business tonight. Ordinance twenty eighteen oh four oh three, I'll have Brian present. He certainly has a better way of discussing this than I would.
This is an amendment of FOG ordinance, which is fats, oils and grease that we deal with. So this affects any food stab, food service establishment. Basically, this is clarifying and setting guidelines for the restaurants. Currently, our ordinance, basically you get all the way to the bottom of, and there's a catch-all phrase saying you're not allowed to discharge anything into the system that's gonna cause this problem with the plant collection system. So this is just clarifying that and, and just outlining what needs to happen to, to prevent fats, oils and greases from getting into our collection system, lift stations and all planned to the plant. We've taken these ordinances and Dwayne can speak also or testify that we've, we've looked at Goshen, Fort Wayne, Muncie and kind of formed our own ordinance. We didn't like some of what the other cities said and we liked some of what, we've tried to really use this more of an education and working with the restaurant owner instead of saying, you know, mandating you put, some cities, you have to put in a fifteen-hundred gallon interceptor. It doesn't matter how big the restaurant is. It doesn't matter how much grease you have. If you serve food, you put that in. Well, that's, it's an expensive thing to put in the ground. So we have traps, we have interceptors and it, it just changes the cleaning frequency based on what you have. Ninety days for an interceptor is sort of an industry standard. We have been working with some of these restaurants that use, have a lot more fats, oils and greases. They do have to clean more frequently to make sure that that doesn't get full and then overflow to our sanitary system. Are there any questions at this point? What, I've had some brief conversations. I, I don't know what questions you may or may not have.
Brian, you say education. How many fast food restaurants or restaurants involved have you educated or worked with so they're aware of this?
Dan, our, the guy that's sort of over the FOG program right now, has been to, I believe, about every restaurant almost. We've, we've really-
That's a big key, that communication and education.
Education is the big key to it. There's no question about it. So, and that's what Dan has been doing to go out and try to give that education. But the question he always comes, or the question he is asked sometimes, well, where does it say I have to do this? You know, and we've had some places in the past that has been plugged and we've had to spend a few hours unplugging those lines. And it's just, it's not a national thing right now under the pretreatment section, but most all cities are getting together some kind of an ordinance for their FOG programs because you take your chain restaurants, that's the thing on the bottom that they never train the new manager on to come and clean out the interceptor. So that, that's a big issue.
Dwayne, is-
Yes.
My understanding is that if the city has to go out and unplug their line from grease that's come from, that the city by code does have the right to charge that individual for that work?
We can, yes.
So that's kind of the enforcement mechanism in here. There's, there's no fine in here. It's something that we've always had the ability to do. It just sets the expectation for the owners of, of what best practices are to avoid that.
Yes, and we've had that before. We didn't charge them, but we threatened. Yeah, let's use that word. Yes, we did.
And now that you've laid it out-
There's not any question. Yeah. And as you say, we'll, we'll work with them to educate them. That's not a question.
I was just hoping that, you know, we didn't have five hundred restaurant owners in here in a month saying, wait a minute, what's happened? And how's all this work? And so I do appreciate you communicating with them and trying to work with them to better treat them.
Yeah, that's number one.
Does Columbia, excuse me, Jeff. Does Columbia City have this ordinance?
I'm not aware of Columbia City.
Does Plymouth have this ordinance?
Who?
Plymouth?
I'm not aware of-
Does Wabash have this ordinance?
I believe Wabash does, yes.
Does Goshen?
Goshen does. Goshen's had this for three or four, four years.
And Alcott does-
Maybe, maybe longer than that, yes, yeah.
So Columbia City and Plymouth probably don't.
And Goshen has permits that they write to the restaurant owners. We're not looking at that. We're just looking at going in one time, doing an inspection and then letting them know what we require. Do you clean your interceptor or your trap? And then we will kind of follow through with that to make sure that's being cleaned.
Good.
How much does something like this cost for a restaurant to do?
An interceptor sometimes can cost between five to six thousand dollars to put, possibly up to ten, yeah.
And that would be for those that have larger discharges?
Yes, and, and would have the room to put one in. Now, your downtown locations usually have the inside trap, which has to be cleaned on a much more regular basis. The advantage to the interceptor, unless we deem that it needs to be cleaned every thirty days or forty-five, we kind of use the standard of every ninety days. So that's, that's a pretty good time span. Unless, again, they're real busy and we find it needs to be cleaned in forty-five, then we would require them to clean it in forty-five days.
And what happens with the grease and the, when they clean it, or does, what are, what are they supposed to do with it at that point?
Typically, what happens is one of these waste haulers in town, or they even have them come from out of town, will clean that grease out. And then there's limited places that will accept the grease. Like we take septic waste, but we won't take grease waste. Fort Wayne will take grease. I think Milford might take some grease, but then they take it and get rid of it there.
Okay. Is this what you were talking to us about before, that we might eventually be able to do it?
Yeah, when we go to the anaerobic digesters, that is a potential source of, of food for the digesters, the grease. But we're not putting in that system at the startup.
Do you have any figures on approximately what it might cost to have that professional waste company come in and clean it?
When they have the interceptors-
It's around two hundred and fifty to three hundred, I think, for the interceptor.
Did everyone hear that? It's two hundred and fifty to three hundred for the big fifteen-hundred gallon interceptor to be cleaned.
So if they just have a grease trap, they are responsible for cleaning that themselves?
Some of them still hire that, have a, one of the septic haulers come in and clean that. It's not a pleasant job.
But they can do it themselves.
But they can do it themselves. And once again, the problem is, you know, many of these, especially the fast food restaurants, you rotate people. And so it's hard to get someone trained on how to do that and the frequency to do it. And so they'll have an outside company take care of it.
But on the interceptors, it really would have to be a professional?
Oh, absolutely. You have to have the equipment to-
Can you guys estimate what ballpark percentage is grease trap versus interceptor? If you looked at restaurants, seventy, thirty, eighty, twenty, ninety, ten?
Well, that's a tough one.
No ballpark? I won't hold you to. I'm just trying to learn.
No, really.
No, okay.
I think the majority have the interceptors.
And there's been a few that have put in an interceptor since we heavily got into this program about a year ago.
What does BMAX have?
BMAX has a trap inside, yeah.
Many of the downtown restaurants have traps just because you don't have room to put this outside of your building.
How would a coffee shop be handled that may have sandwiches, but-
Coffee actually has quite a bit of oil from the coffee beans. You, you can see it floating on your cup sometimes.
That's what makes the coffee good.
Yeah. So the, yeah, we require, we would require a trap or an interceptor even at a Starbucks or coffee shop.
In fact, they have already put one in, I believe, out there. McAllisters and Southwest Grill, they've both already put in an interceptor.
Most places, when they build them, a restaurant, put one in. It's, it's, it's common to put one in. It's not something new to the industry. The problem is, many of these restaurants rotate managers so frequently. Some of them don't even know they have them, never heard of such a thing, and then you don't get them cleaned out and then all that grease starts plugging our lines, plugging our lift stations, causing-
They can plug their lateral.
They can plug their own lateral. And it can cause sewer backups into homes, businesses, the restaurants. So I mean, we're, it's a preventative maintenance type of-
I honestly don't see where this all of a sudden has become a problem. What are the, what do we do about the restaurants in Wynona?
It hasn't all of a sudden become a problem. We've, I mean, we had some bad restaurants on fifteen and that was, that was a human safety problem. We had our main line on fifteen plugged. You wanna talk about scary? Get out in the middle of fifteen. We parked three trucks, a flagman. Our flagman gets chased over the curb three or four times by cars on their- And so we, that was one of them we did threaten. You need to do something because we've come out here repeatedly to clean this line due to blockage from grease.
What about the restaurants in Wynona?
Wait.
Wynona's our second largest sewer customer, right?
They are required to meet our sewer ordinances.
But you can enforce that in Wynona?
Yes, we can reinforce it. Wynona, Leesburg.
And Leesburg.
Would you say the majority of the restaurants are in compliance right now, or are there a lot that are not?
There was a lot that were not. Like I said, many of them didn't know what we were talking about when we asked them to see the records for their grease trap and come to find out they did have one and it hadn't been cleaned in three or four years, so. There was a few restaurants that, Cozy Cottage, I think they just had a trap. And when they did their remodel, they, they decided to put an interceptor in. They don't have to clean it as often and it's, it's outside and-
And then their, and then their employees don't have to worry so much about it as far as an inside interceptor. Cause most of those have to be cleaned like once a week. So if you put in an interceptor, then you kind of take some of that off of your employees to concentrate on other things.
It seems like a good faith effort to me and related to what the mayor has said. I don't know what legal wants to say, but the language is there. We've educated you, we've worked with you. This is good practice. If you continue to cause problems or don't follow it, then we can start to make life difficult for them, to encourage them, okay, with money, to do the right thing. Is that, am I?
Well, I, there's no, there's no enforcement mechanism. The whole idea here is to say-
Let back up a little bit. This is just an amendment to the current pretreatment standards.
Okay.
There is an enforcement mechanism in the current pretreatment standards.
With regards to the cost of cleaning out, correct?
Yeah, or civil, as penalties as well, yeah. I mean, there's an, there's a enforcement response plan in the pretreatment standards as well. So if you would get somebody, you could require a show cause hearing. If they just absolutely refuse, we could require a show cause hearing why they don't believe they- If they just absolutely refuse, we could require a show cause hearing why they don't believe they should be compliant.
But the issue is that we haven't had any standards to try and, and, and give guidance to.
This is that.
And the whole idea here is to try and minimize and eliminate these plugs and having to go out and, I mean, if you haven't told someone what the city expects them to do, how can, how can you go back and do that?
Good point.
Our two biggest problems with sewer maintenance and blockages are the flushable wipes that aren't really flushable. And the, and grease clogs and backups. So those, those are our two biggest issues that we deal with on a day to day. When we get a call that the sewer line's backed up, it's typically one of those two items has caused us a problem.
So if I understand, I'm trying to wrap my head around this, there are rules in place that restaurants are required to meet standards, they have to have an interceptor or a-
Trap.
A trap, correct?
Currently, in our current ordinance, there is not that requirement. We have the general, like, as OSHA calls it, the general duty clause, where you can't do anything that harms our system. That's all, that's all we have really for fast oil and grease is currently. This puts in a standard, this puts in what our expectations are and the requirements are. So you do not harm our system or block it.
And is the harm being done great?
Oh, we, typically, like I said, typically, we, we get, I don't know, our sewer calls are down. A lot of that has to do with all the work we've put into it over the last four or five years, keeping it clean and, and televising it. But, like I said, probably seventy, eighty percent of our calls, if we get a call and our line's blocked, it's either due to grease or the flushable wipes.
But we're talking about grease here. So about how many restaurants do you think, Brian, are inputting into the system? How many restaurants do we have? About a hundred, I'm guessing?
Yeah, or a hundred, ten, twenty, somewhere in that range, yes.
So, one, one question that I, came to my mind was, if we try to control the grease coming out of a hundred restaurants, and granted, they're going to be putting out more than an average home, but we have a hundred restaurants, and how many homes do we have that are not even doing what restaurants are doing now? Washing dishes, the grease goes into the, the system. We have thousands of homes. Is, is making a change here, what we're talking about, really going to make any difference when you have thousands of homes doing the same thing?
Um, we, with the home situation, we try and do public education and outreach. We typically have booth fair, the Lakes Festival, those types of things. We try and, and give public education on, you know, don't, don't put that down your drain. For a homeowner, it, while it, when all the homes combined, it's still significant. Typically, they're going to plug their own lateral because it's such a low flow before they cause a lot of harm to us. Now, the apartment buildings, some of those larger clustered residents, we have had some problems. It, it's a lot harder to control because we don't have the, it's hard to pinpoint who's doing it when you, when you're in a residential area. You know, when, when IDN wants to clean up the waters of the state, they come to the permitted users because the non-point people are too hard to try and figure out what they're polluting. So, we're trying to deal with the people with the greatest concentrations of greases and flows coming into the system and eliminating as much of that as we possibly can.
I'd like to have some more time, I think, to talk to restaurants and to get more, more education. It's just a pretty far-reaching ordinance. It even sets up possibility for selective enforcement, even after we're gone. So I, to me, it's pretty far-reaching. I'd like to be able to talk to some restaurant people and get their input personally.
So do most restaurants have equipment in place?
Most restaurants-
And what I want to ask really is, by doing this, it's not going to put, is it going to put an undue burden on them, on certain restaurants that, you know, restaurant business is tough?
Most restaurants do have something in place.
They already do.
Our biggest struggle is when you get a, a strip mall and the store closes and a restaurant goes in there because that infrastructure wasn't put in place for a restaurant when it was built originally. So that becomes our biggest challenge in trying to get some sort of grease removal into those situations.
So would this address that problem? Could the building and planning department say, okay, yeah, this used to be a, a department store. You want to put a restaurant, you got to do this in order for, to get the permit?
There's two things, I think, that you need to focus on, and, because there's two different elements. One element, obviously, is associated with the, the product that you have to use, which is what they're trying to give a lot of latitude to. There's already, any restaurant that would come in, and even a restaurant that would come into a strip mall, will always be required to have a grease trap. Before they would get a permit, part of their permit, they have to have a grease trap. You're not building a restaurant in Warsaw without a grease trap. This is really defining what that grease trap is to a certain extent, because the state code doesn't. What, what we do now is we tell them, we don't, we don't have a standard. So you have to provide us a certification of what that is going to do. So whatever your business, so you have to have someone design and say, this works. What that's trying to, what this is trying to do is provide a little, little bit of, um, understanding of what our requirement is in terms of what mechanism you have to do. And the second part of that is the maintenance, the, the cleaning of it. Obviously, building code doesn't get into the cleaning. Building code says you build a restaurant. If you're doing X, Y, and Z, you have to have a grease trap. That grease trap has to meet in certain standards based on the building code. This is really more or less defining, to a certain extent, what the city standard is for that grease trap. But it's not going to get into, the building code side doesn't get into the enforcement or the cleaning of that trap. That's a lot of what this ordinance is, is focused on, will be the cleaning of that trap. So any restaurant that builds already has to have a grease trap. So this ordinance will not affect that.
But the existing ones, it does, right?
The existing ones, uh, this gives a little bit more latitude to, because if someone were to come in with an existing, we don't have kind of a, a, a definition of what is required in terms of what we would tell them was, you, you have to tell us what is required. This is trying to give them a little bit more leeway in what that is. But some of that's going to come back on them, on how they would have to maintain it.
So this really isn't setting a, a new standard for requiring equipment and expensive process? This is just really giving them what our expectations are?
For any new construction, absolutely. They're, they're already required.
This ordinance is for new construction?
No.
No, that's-
I'm not, I'm saying if someone were to come in and want to build a new restaurant, they're going to be required to, if someone were going to come in and want to locate in a strip mall that did not have a previous restaurant, they would have to come up with a solution to provide a grease trap.
Okay. And these are the requirements that we're looking for?
Yes. But I'm not entirely sure that there is any restaurants that don't have some form of grease trap. This provides a little bit more leeway into what, what that grease trap can be, inside, outside, and so forth.
Well, you've helped me because I thought we were maybe starting something that was going to be expensive for, you know, everyone in town going, oh my gosh, now I got to spend thousands of dollars to meet this new requirement. But I'm not hearing you say that.
There's, like I said, there's very limited number of restaurants that don't have something in place currently.
One or the other, already, yes.
But are there some that have the grease traps that may be required to get the grease interceptor?
We, we have not required the interceptor. There are restaurants out there that have a trap that are heavy grease users. And we've encouraged and said, if you put this interceptor in, it's, because if you get to where you're having to clean that trap every day or two, at some point, it becomes more cost-effective to put the interceptor in and have it cleaned once every ninety days. We just, whatever system you have in, we just want you to maintain it so it works. That, that is what we're after with this ordinance, is, is, is you maintain what you have installed so that it's working and keeping the grease load out of our system.
Does that say that in this ordinance?
Essentially.
No, I didn't read it that way.
The directives say that, to me. Eliminate large amounts of grease buildup in the collection system piping, reduce frequent extensive cleaning and/or replacement of collection system piping, and increase effective treatment of wastewater at City of Warsaw P O T.
So how would you find out that somebody is not following this ordinance?
We, we just request that they send us their records for cleaning. It's, at the-
Right, I saw that at the end. But would they come to your attention because you had to clear out a line? Or are you planning on going to every restaurant now?
We have basically been to every restaurant.
Okay, so, but, but they're giving you pushback, some of them. And this is why you want it more clearly defined. So once it was more clarity defined, are you then going to notify every restaurant that this is now?
Most of the restaurants have not. We haven't. There's only been a couple where we-
Probably know who the problems are.
Had, there's only been a couple that we've had much pushback from it on. Most of them, you know, are willing to do what's needed to, to be done. It, it benefits them as much as anybody. They don't plug their own lateral up. They don't have sewage backing up in the kitchen drain or, I mean-
Bad smell.
Or a bad smell in the restaurant or, um-
Is there an inspection process with this that's going to be automatic?
Yes. Um, part of it's just requesting their records. And then we go out, Dan, who, who's kind of spearheaded this program lately, is, we have the equipment. He goes and he'll, he'll stick, we've got a, a pole you stick down there to see how much grease is in the grease trap. Because once they get to-
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent, you're supposed to get them cleaned out. So. And another thing this will help with, um, on the cleaning, is it, that's in here, right? When, when, uh, we have a, we've had a trouble with a couple contractors. They'll clean the, the grease trap out into their truck and they let that settle for a little bit. And then they decant the clean water back into their, into the customer's grease chapel. Really, by the time all that settles out, that grease trap's a quarter full again because they decanted back into it. So we, we, the, the restaurant owner's going to get what he pays for because we're going to, we tell them they can't decant back into the system.
Well, you've answered a lot of my questions. And, you know, I came into this wondering about it because I didn't want to put an unfair financial burden on a lot of restaurants. On the other hand, I don't want our expensive equipment that taxpayers pay for being constantly jeopardized by people who aren't following the rules that everybody else is following. So I, I appreciate your input a lot. It's been informative.
Let me, let me say something to that. And that's one of the reasons why this is needed. Because we don't want Joe Blow down the road telling somebody else, well, why are you having to do that? They didn't tell me I had to do that. Where this will correct a lot of that. Yes, consistency, yes.
I know that was a lot of complaints I was getting, is that there was no standard, so that there was no consistency with cleaning. And some felt that they potentially had to clean out more often than others.
Well, they may have to clean out more.
Right. But the bottom line is, we're protecting our equipment and we're giving, setting the expectation.
Huge investment, huge investment of taxpayer dollars.
All right, anybody else? Brian, anything else to add to this? So again, what you're considering here, this is, all these, all this information is, is the amendment to the current general ordinance.
Are there any restaurateurs here? I was just curious.
I really think-
Does this have to have two, two readings?
More than likely. I would, I would suggest after our discussion tonight, we would.
Okay.
Depending on how this goes.
Well, I'd like to table this until the next time so we can have a chance to talk to some of these restaurants. This is really far-reaching. And this is another example of how we have ordinances given to us a day before we have to make a decision that have really large ramifications. There's a city to the north of us that has a, uh, an ordinance like this. And they are having an enforcement nightmare. Their businesses are in an uproar because it has turned into selective enforcement. And I sure don't want to see that happen. I'd sure like to talk to someone with the restaurant people, any of them.
But if this has to have a, have a couple readings, then are we even voting on anything tonight, or is this just all information?
We consider it on first reading and then, but it has, it requires two readings to pass.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next time, to give someone time to consider it and talk to the people involved.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
I'll second that.
Motion's, Aiden seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Is there any time sensitivity here?
There, not, no, not necessarily.
And when would it come back to us?
May seventh.
I would assume at the next council meeting.
At the next council?
May seventh.
Is this tabled or will it actually be on?
Right. Well, that would be my motion to bring it back to the next council meeting.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily against it. I just want to have a little more time. I talked to a few restaurants and I just don't want you to-
Yeah, that's good. And I think that's a reasonable request.
All right, there's a motion on the floor and seconded. Table to the following meeting. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, table to the next one. Thank you. Thank you for the explanation.
Discussion was very good, right?
Specific information that you would want them to gather, that we can provide you?
Well, I think we're, we'd like to know how many restaurants there are and then what percentage right now you think are not in compliance, just so that we have an idea-
That'd be very good.
Of how many people are affected.
I would like, I would put out the call for some restaurant owners to come and, and just want to hear what they think about it. Because I'm, I'm not in that business. I don't, I-
You know, we're-
The one thing this, I mean, just to interject a little bit, the one thing we're really trying to achieve here is protecting our infrastructure.
Yes.
Protecting people downstream from that restaurant, from sewage backups. When our lines block, our pumps plug, things fail. But we're, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to protect our system by keeping this grease out. Same way we do with, with the major industry in town saying, you can't send these harmful metals to us. You have to take those out. We, we don't treat those. And that, that's what we're trying to do here, is say, you take, you create the grease, you keep the grease. We'll treat the, the wastewater.
Adam, I don't know if you know the answer to this or not, but is there, um, if we wanted to do something with this to phase it in, like, to make it effective and then give ninety days to become effective or a hundred and twenty days? Is that just something that we could amend into this ordinance, or how would that happen?
It would be part of the passing of the ordinance. You could say that it is an effective date in the future of X date.
Okay, so we could, um-
I believe so. I can acknowledge that.
So we could, we could pass it and then whatever we, I mean, partly, I think if you're going to go out and talk to restaurant owners, you're going to say to them, you know, in order for you to become compliant with this, how much time would it take? And how mu, you know, how much money, how much time would it take to see if there is any issue with it? There may not be, because most of them may be doing it already. And when you do your research, you're going to find that out. But if there are people who are like-
I think you're going to find most of them are compliant.
Yeah.
We've been working with them already, trying to encourage this.
I really appreciate what, what you're doing. And I agree with your, your premise that we like to protect the environment and our equipment. However, we beg for businesses coming to town. And I sure would hate to have this close a business down.
And, and we, we have tried and tried to make this as friendly as we can.
Yeah.
There is a city to the north of us. And if you have a restaurant, you're putting in a fifteen hundred gallon interceptor. It doesn't matter- It doesn't matter if you serve one sandwich a day, or if you serve ten thousand meals a day.
Right.
It doesn't matter if you're a mom and popper, if you're a huge restaurant. And we've tried to make this as flexible and easy to work with as possible, and give them the options of what they want to do, knowing, you know, if you choose this option, the downfall is you clean more. If you choose this option, it's more money upfront, but you don't clean as frequently, so.
Well, I appreciate your efforts again.
We, we are trying to encourage business as well.
Yeah, I like Diane's suggestion, too, that perhaps we could build in, you've got like ninety days or a hundred and twenty days or something like that. As a small business owner, sometimes, you know, if you've gotta come into compliance-
So, right now, it says this ordinance will be in full force and effective from and after its passage, so would you like to have that changed to ninety days?
Well, I, I think part of the issue, though, is if somebody has to put this system in, you gotta give them time to put the thing in.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, however you wanna do that.
I think that's what we're saying, yeah.
Well, and I mean, I, I don't think that these guys are gonna go in and shut them down because they didn't get it done right away, is what I'm trying to say. These guys have used their, they've worked with these businesses, they've seen these problems, and, and I understand, if you just receive this and feel like, perhaps, give me a little more time, I think that's fine, and I think that's good, and we'll, we'll consider it at the next meeting. But I applaud you for trying to put this out to where these problems we've had in the past, hopefully, we can avoid. So, thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate your attention, yeah. So, to Lynn's point, if we put something in there about a time period, would that be like, they, they come to me, I have a restaurant, you have a problem, you need to address it, you have X number of days to fix it, the ordinance would go into effect when we pass it, but any changes that need to be made to a restaurant, they would have sixty days, ninety days to address that problem?
Right.
Okay. I like that.
Yeah, I think you can do it a number of ways, either just put it, make the ordinance not effective, tell X number of days.
Can we put something in there like that?
I mean, it's like code enforcement, when you go to court enforcement, if there's a problem, they certainly are gonna give you time to rectify that problem, and if you feel that that's important, that that be in there, I think that's fine, but-
We just wanna do it right. We, we wanna do it right.
I think if you talk to restaurants, you're gonna find most of them already have something in place, and they could be in effect from day one because they already are doing what-
Well, I hope the media puts that word that we'd like to have some of them, I'm not going to them, they can come here.
I might go to them.
Well, I go there anyway, but not to talk about-
Let's go ahead and move on to that ordinance, twenty eighteen oh four oh four. And Brian, I'll have you stay up here and explain this, raising of this actually more liberal amount of ammonia discharge.
I think this will be much easier than the last ordinance. I was asked when we changed our sewer use ordinance, and I said, it's been at least a year ago, it was twenty fifteen. We incre, we increased the amount of ammonia you can discharge to us. What we failed to do was change that hundred milligrams per liter in, in this section of the ordinance where you talk about surcharging. So, we just want to raise that to the hundred milligrams per liter before you're surcharged. Technically, how our ordinance is written now, you could discharge what we allow in our sewer use ordinance, but we could surcharge you because it's over the surcharge limit. So, we just wanna increase the surcharge limit to match what the sewer use ordinance says.
Questions?
Is it sixty-seven cents per pound right now?
This ninety-seven cents per pound reflects the increase from-
Fifty to a hundred.
No, the, the twenty percent increase we did last year for the rates, that ninety-seven cents was increased also from, well, twenty percent less than that.
Seven, six, nine, twelve.
All right, is there any questions on the, the need to do this, to catch up with the previous?
It was an oversight when we did their sewer use ordinance, really, but it should've been changed at that time to, to match it.
I would move to approve ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash zero four dash zero four.
I second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Is there a desire to suspend the rules and consider ordinance twenty eighteen oh four oh four on second reading, having passed unanimously?
I moved.
I second Jack's thought.
All right, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right.
So, that was Ron and Jack, the motion, okay, thank you.
We'll move on to, again, new business ordinance, twenty eighteen oh five oh one. This is the initial reading of a vacation of public ways. This would be the second part of the vacation that occurred our last meeting, and I'll have Mike, or Steve, go ahead and talk about this.
Thank you, Steve Snyder for Lake City Bank. At the conclusion of the original vacation, which was only for a portion of the north-south and the east-west alley, there was significant discussion about just vacating the remainder of the alleys. One reason, makes maintenance easier for the city because you don't have to turn a ninety-degree corner when you're trying to keep the alley open. Secondly, the church was concerned about maintaining its access, and third, the bank said, you don't have to worry, City of Warsaw, we're gonna provide all the maintenance for everything. And at that point, the question came up, why not just vacate all of the alleys, the entirety of the north-south alley and the entirety of the east-west alley? We discussed this with the church, the church was in favor, and as a result, I filed the new petition that's before you tonight for first reading to do just that, vacate all of the alleys in that block. In conjunction with that, just as we did with the last vacation ordinance, I have drafted an easement between the church and the bank, because it now needs to be a reciprocal easement because a portion of what would be vacated in this petition would become owned by the church, and a portion would become owned by the bank. So, we have reciprocal easements allowing access by both the bank and the church over everything, almost everything, and specifying the maintenance requirements for the bank in regard to snow removal, asphalt paving, patching, striping, general maintenance to maintain it in a smooth and passable way. So, what we're here asking for tonight is to essentially supplement the prior vacation by vacating the remainder of the alleys that are not vacated, again, subject to the bank and the church entering into the reciprocal easement, a copy of which has been provided, so that the ordinance would become effective immediately following the, I guess you haven't seen it yet, but anyway, immediately following the approval of the vacation, we would record the easement, then the vacation would become effective. This easement is a little more complicated than the last one you saw, simply because there are more parcels involved. It's a reciprocal easement, and we wanna make sure we cover everything that the church wants for its east-west ingress and egress, and the bank wants for its east-west and north-south ingress and egress.
All right, those are being passed down now. I know, at our last, we were discussing this and considering this the first time around, and I know you all brought up some good points and had some discussion that was helpful when we went on to the public hearing. Knowing what's happened and what's involved here, I think you have that opportunity again tonight, if you've got any specific concerns to address petitioner, and certainly, those, those can be prepared as that public hearing occurs at the next meeting, May seventh meeting. So, questions?
I, I would just like to state that the church is aware, and they plan to be here on the seventh, but it is correct that this discussion has taken place and that, that this church is in favor of it, just for your information. But I, I can't make that statement officially, that, just to share that information, that this has actually been discussed this time and gone over, and we're good.
Anything else?
Yeah, that's a triple win.
I think we come out better, actually.
There's no further discussion, is there a motion to approve on first reading?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Twenty eighteen oh five oh one.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve, twenty eighteen oh five oh one on first reading.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
We'll see you-
See you, May seventh.
May seventh? Thank you. All right, any, anything else come for the council?
Comes to any.
Any visitors, questions, or comments? Troop one thirty, thank you for your-
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty. Thank you for your attention. Hour and twenty minutes, I think, your leadership value ice cream after this.
Bill it to the mayor.
Yeah, bill it to the mayor.
Bill it to the mayor.
Do you all have, do you all have any questions about what we did tonight? All right, well, thank you for coming, and you're certainly welcome back. All right, anybody else?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
All right, thank you.